Edward R. Murrow, College of Communication at Washington State University. Online at N W P R dot org.
Let's start again.
There you go.
Hi, welcome to the May 22nd Administrative Meeting. Art is here and also Walter. Walter's filling in again for John Weber, who was absent last week. And we'll get started with the approval of the minutes from May 8th.
They look good to me and to me.
And to me as well. So we can move those on. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Art Walk Beer and/or Wine Garden Resolution, Art Walk Sidewalk Cafe, Temporary Expansion Resolution with Mr. Hall and Ms. Burns. How are you?
Sounds like a title written by a lawyer.
Good afternoon. We'll have two resolutions for your consideration to recommend toward or recommend to the Council for consideration. But Kathleen was going to start off with giving a little bit of presentation on upcoming Art Walk 2017.
Okay.
So, we're pretty deep into planning for Art Walk. And again, the streets will be closed from Sixth all the way down to the Water Department. And so, we're filling it in with businesses and activities and music and so...
And the date?
June 16th, yes. So, one thing that would be great to do is looking at, we've offered folks to have beer gardens in the past. And a couple of years ago, I think there was a beer garden with Casa Lopez expanding. But, but we looked at how they did the Vandal Block Party, which was more all-inclusive of the whole block. And I think that's the best practice and the best way to do it. And the easiest way for the city to do it. And it's proven to be very successful with the block parties. So, this brings it to the attention to look at the same type of planning for Art Walk as we've done in the past with the block parties.
And just go in, would you go in a little further why it best serves that format?
Well, the streets are already closed. It's a public venue. There's already sidewalk cafes in existence that can just expand their boundary. And then, it's just a better pro... I think Jen can speak to that because I didn't plan the Vandal Block Party, but...
The sidewalk cafe extension is one of the resolutions we're looking at today. And that does provide businesses existing on Main Street the ability to serve more customers because we do have so many people that come downtown. And then the beer garden, beer or wine garden portion allows vendors that are perhaps not in Main Street downtown, other businesses within town, to participate in the event. And also, to help, it's, I always think of it kind of as a living room. The more things you have in the living room and the cozier the people are, the better the party is, kind of idea. So, just providing that festive activity and whatnot for the event. Like to give it a try with Art Walk this year. I think we looked at it last year. Didn't actually have any vendors take us up on it last year, but with the block party, it's done really well. And thanks to the resolution and the consideration of the Council for allowing that potential process.
So will you then name it such, like, you know, because it was called a block party for the Art Walk? Do you have to then, you don't have to do any kind of that?
No.
Well, it'll just be part of Art Walk.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just using the similar process.
Okay.
You said nobody took you up on it last year. Was that the expanded, existing sidewalk cafe people that nobody did? What did you mean?
No, this was the beer. We did not have that offered for the expanding sidewalk cafes last year.
No.
Last year, we introduced the resolution, or you passed a resolution to allow beer gardens, but nobody actually used the beer gardens.
But we've had the expanded sidewalk cafes at some point for something, haven't we?
We have, we tested that with a block party, I think, the first year out with the block party. We did an expansion of sidewalk cafes. So we thought, and that model worked well also for those existing downtown. So thought it might be a good, good fit for the Art Walk process.
But nobody...
They did take us up on it for the block party.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. But we had not offered that option.
But not for the, not for Art Walk.
No, we haven't offered the sidewalk cafe extension for Art Walk.
This is the first time we're presenting this to you on this concept.
During the rest of the presentation, it may be shortstop questions that are jumping the gun.
Okay, well, I will be quiet, Art, and let him finish.
Well, another part of our Art Walk, I don't know if Kathleen was going to get to that, they're also adding from Third Street North, Car and Shine.
Yep.
And so, what we're trying to do is fill up the streets. And this is allowed, make it a little more festive. And so, if you have the beer and wine gardens that are allowed in the street with other activity going on, it'll look like a lot more is happening and more inviting.
And you, and you said you're doing it where?
So between Third and all the way down to A, the Water Department, that will be completely filled in this year. We're partnering with Good Samaritan. They have a car show on the Saturday after Art Walk. And we've worked with them to reach out to car enthusiasts that they already have on their mailing list for classics to come in. And we've worked with engineering to position 13 cars. It's the 13th year for Art Walk. So, we're just trying to fill in the spaces. We also have a 3D chalk artist coming to be on the street in front of the Chamber of Commerce. And it's being sponsored by a surgeons group, which is really great. And we have the U of I Chess Club. Also, we're going to have more kids chalk down by Fifth Street. So we're just trying to fill it all in. And we have had a request from Hunga Dunga to do a beer garden in there outside of the area of Art Walk. And so, that might be a good fit for them to be in Art Walk as a beer garden. So, I think there's a potential for possibilities, I think. But first, we need to...
Well, I just felt like with the resolutions, you're trying not to have the downtown so pieced apart. You're just trying to make it...
Fill it in.
Yeah, just make it all open.
Yep.
Yeah, so great.
And so, we have two resolutions before you today. One would be allowing beer and wine gardens within the Central Business District during the area of the Art Walk that Kathleen described. We've done those in the past and they've been successful. We've done them with, I think, the Vandal Town. And we've had a couple of other businesses take advantage of Art Walks, or not Art Walks, but beer and wine gardens for private events or public events in the public streets. And then, we also have another resolution that will allow for the temporary expansion of sidewalk cafes. And in the resolution, it says if somebody wishes to do that, they have to have permission from the next adjoining business owners next door. And if they give them permission in writing, they could apply to the city clerk to ask to have their sidewalk cafe expanded for that period. And if they serve alcohol, they would have to get a catering permit because it would be outside of their licensed area. And they would be asking for a temporary expansion of that by getting a catering permit.
And my, my question was on when you get, when I was reading through, and you have to get permission. Was there a time period that I have to, if I were doing it, that you'd have to get your permission by? I mean, I know there was if you were going to serve alcohol, there was a certain period of time. But is there a certain period of time that they must get permission from the neighbor?
Yeah, before they apply, they would have to have their adjoining business owner giving them permission in writing. When they come in to apply for it, they need to have that secured.
Okay. And then, they have usually that five days?
We try to say five days, but reality, sometimes it's, they come in, somebody has an idea, I want to do it. And the city clerk will, says that, you know, I want to try to work with people as much as they can, but they do need some time to get it through. You know, that fire has a review and police departments have a review. And then, so the streets are already going to be taken care of. That shouldn't be an issue. But we're asking that, yeah, if you're going to do that, please plan ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I recall from the last time we did the sidewalk cafe expansion, it was only in one direction. You couldn't go both directions, right?
Correct.
Okay.
What do you mean?
Only one business.
Well, you can do one business to decide. You can't do businesses on both sides.
Oh, okay, right.
Yeah, okay. So in other words, it's just patterned exactly like what we've done before?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
I just, I, if I may, I want to make sure it's an Art Walk with sidewalk cafes and beer gardens, not sidewalk cafes and beer gardens with art thrown in.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, let's be careful that we don't forget...
Correct.
...what we're doing here. Not that you would, but just thought I'd mention.
Yep.
And I hope it was mentioned, there are 64 local businesses this year that are participating and have over 114 artists that will also be displaying their work. That is the focus of Art Walk.
Yeah, well, it was great. I read through everything and then I went to the city code to see how it's supported by police and fire. And it looked really, it looked terrific. And so, I was really glad to see it's going to be so much easier to handle than trying to do the piecemeal thing. So, I really appreciate that thinking. Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
If it's a resolution, do I have to, yeah, so on the regular agenda? Great. So both will just go on the regular agenda?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Presentation time.
Just a quick note, as these guys get their information set up, the two reports that you're seeing this afternoon are from two of our Masters of Public Administration interns that have been with us over the past year, two semesters. Daniel actually has only been with us for this last semester and has had a heavy focus in grants. And so, I'm really proud that they're coming forward with some of these projects that they've completed, that they'll be able to take on with them to other things as they look forward to what's happening after graduation. So, appreciate their time and I'm happy to have them make these presentations.
Right, and what's your name again? Because you're not on...
Yep.
Uh, Daniel Gray.
Daniel?
Yep, Daniel.
Daniel, okay.
So I've had the opportunity to work with Daniel this entire semester. I was really excited that Jen and Gary decided to have an intern focus just on a project that worked with the grants. And so, that has really, as you'll see as we kind of go through the report, taken a lot of workload off of me that I haven't had time to do for a long time. And so, it puts us in a place where I'm kind of setting a new timeline for myself and being able to maintain the program. So I'm looking forward to it.
That's excellent.
Daniel will go through a PowerPoint that he's prepared. And I'll chime in in a couple of different spots and then we'll be open for your questions.
Excellent, thank you.
So, before we get into the, the policies and procedures that we ended up having developing over the spring, I just kind of wanted to talk generally about the grants portfolio that the City of Moscow does maintain and has kind of developed over the years. First and kind of foremost, we currently have right around $11.2 million in total grant awards since 2007, since the current grants manager was hired. That has been generated from 95 separate applications. We've been awarded 75 times. So actually, leaves us with a success rate of right around 80%. That's slightly higher than 78, but we can kind of round to there, which is pretty incredible. Private grant writing firms generally advertise a win rate of, you know, 75 to 85% to basically contract professional private grants writing company. Fact that we can retain 78% from one person, kind of, or at least one kind of solitary grants manager is, is pretty incredible. What that actually means is that we come out to, even including those that we miss or don't get, we see a return of about $118,000 per grant application we submit, which is pretty fantastic. And spread across most major city departments. I think the only, one that doesn't really make it as legal, and that's just because there's not a lot of opportunity for grants funding there. Administration, we have, and you have some of the details here, but...
Yeah. Under, and first, I wanted to say that it really takes a village to do this, just not, you know, the grants manager position, but really, being able to have that position coordinates all of it. But working with the department directors and their staff, gleaming a lot of knowledge, I've, you know, asked a lot of questions over the last 10 years and, and learned more than any one individual could probably learn. And I think I've lost some of it going along the way because there just wasn't enough room. So, my coworkers and I have really put all this together. It's not just been me, but it's been an opportunity for me to work with great people and coordinate. And it's not a learned technique for me, it's a gut feeling. And that's all I can say to explain it. It's just, you know, something that, that I've just learned over the years. So, in administration, we have the Intermodal Transit Center within that amount and several other studies that we've had done for GEM grants and different things. And also, the Brownfields Grant falls under administration. And within the Arts Department, we've had several Idaho Commission on the Arts grants. We've had some studies for the farmer's market and different, you know, different funds. So that's a combination there. Community development is kind of like the keeper of all functions. Bill and I have worked on several projects, but unfortunately, it doesn't fall under, quote, "Bill's Department." But we did have an economic development plan that Bill worked a lot on with Jen and I. It's up in the admin. And then also, the one that did fall under this category, and I'd have to think of what the other number is in there too, but the Southwest Industrial Park, we had a GEM grant that did a strategic plan in looking at that. Fire, we've mainly been looking at equipment over the years, radios, SCBA's, we've had...
Thermal imaging.
Yeah, thermal imaging cameras. So it's really all been equipment field-related to protect our fire department. Parks and Rec, now within there, you'll see, that's a large number for Parks and Rec and a majority of that actually is over probably 600,000 or over 500,000 of that, probably closer. I would say, yeah, probably, I'm thinking, I'm adding in my head, we had a $500,000 award from the Murdoch Foundation and then we had some other smaller awards. So, you know, that's taken up a lot of that. And since we don't have a basic facilities department. But we did have some grants for Paradise Path and some other things that were within that. Police, the majority of the police award really was the COPS grant that we had that was over 300,000 for three years. And then, we have different things such as the mobilizations, the special emphasis mobilizations and the child passenger seat grants and those types of things. And then, some protective vests, bulletproof vests and different things. And in public works, infrastructure has been, you know, huge. The only thing that's in there that isn't infrastructure was the Moscow on the Move, the transportation plan, the overall transportation plan. So, I myself had not been able to keep track of everything in an accumulative report for a few years and so, until we actually were able to pull all this together, I didn't know what the number was either, so.
That's a good feeling, yeah.
Yeah.
Way to go. Congratulations.
Daniel, move forward with his, with his report.
So before, just kind of describing the position, the City of Moscow does maintain a rotating internship program utilizing members of the Masters of Public Administration program on campus. And this is my kind of opportunity to plug the program and unplug the internships because it's been incredibly valuable. Being project-based, it means that for the last five months, I've done basically nothing but grants management work, which means that in a relatively short amount of time, I've been able to familiarize myself with much of the grants process. Specifically though, and in relation to this project, and what we'll kind of be talking about, the Grants Manual today, the position was created to do three basic things. First is just kind of this general modernization. We start in 2007 up through today, I know, we're coming, this is the 10-year mark. Without a very formalized grants management process, there is a lot of things we do informally, which isn't to say it's not efficient or anything like that, it's not a shortcoming there, but to kind of protect against losses and institutional, if there was employee turnover, things like that. There are a lot of things we just do informally. And so, one of the efforts is, as we kind of modernize, is to set up formal policies and procedures. So, as these things happen and as time goes on, we don't lose this very valuable grants management system we've set up over the years. Additionally, the city does have a contract with the E-CIVIS Grants Network and we pay for the software. As part of this, there was a lot of just kind of basic data entry. And we had, I think we've gotten an additional 40 or so grants uploaded, scanned in, so we have a permanent final electronic record of all of these things, making access to the latest a lot easier than it would be to get kind of hard paper copies if we need to and just for maintaining, you know, basic compliance. And then finally, while we do have the E-CIVIS Grants Network or we've had access to it, there wasn't a lot of use, or at least a lot of comprehensive use. And so, one of the last duties kind of assigned to at least this position was to develop some proficiency, figure out how we're going to train people to use it in the future, potential shortcomings and potential advantages of the system. So, there, there are, in the handout provided, there's a general table of contents and there are four sample policies provided. And these are just kind of, there it is. There are four sample policies. They're kind of a fairly wide span. We tried to pick four that covered some of the different elements, some things as simple as roles and responsibilities for different departments, up through how we manage our federal award, or the system for award management. So, we're, we need to have a new authorized organizational representative, how we would physically go about doing that and having that kind of codified or written down. Some are fairly simple, some are for specific departments. But in total, I think we ended up with 26, not counting an appendix. We can talk about, we didn't magic all of this up, there was a bit of a process that we'll talk through. But just for some kind of baseline project goals, yes, and I got to mention this previously, that we're looking to formalize that process and get some of it kind of written down and institutionalized. Specifically to help kind of insulate against things like employee turnover, loss of experience, pass through, yeah.
Just real quick, part of our strategic plan, especially in administration, is doing projects like these so that if we do have just the things that Daniel's talking about, something happens, there's turnover, something, we've referred to some of our manuals upstairs as the hit by a bus manual. If we need to be able to pick something up the next day and continue operations on, we want to make sure we have those processes in place. And this meets that, one of those goals that we've set out in our strategic plan very well.
The second goal kind of outlined was that we're just looking to basically make sure that with this policy, we can help maintain compliance with all state, federal, and particularly single audit regulations requirements, make sure that we're not out of compliance or potentially risking future funding there. We mentioned before, to increase the use of the Grants Network. And then finally, to standardize file naming and storage. Currently, our electronic files are kind of all over the place, or they were, we've been working through them for the past several months. A lot of duplication, things like that. Talking with Zach and others in I S, there is some concern about a lot of duplication, things like that. So if we were to make centralized storage, things like that, for the grants process, that we're not kind of overly duplicating a lot of things. So, trying to find a way to work that in procedurally. So the next couple of slides are just kind of generally speaking about procedure and we're, it's a little text-heavy up there, but in summary, we basically reached out to E-CIVIS as a fairly valuable professional resource for even just kind of some general ideas or general samples of other cities and how they've potentially developed these grant policies. We ended up with three. The City of Brighton, Colorado, the City of East Point, Georgia, and the City of Spokane, Washington. And so, we ranged from seven pages long to over 60 in the case of Spokane. Did a bit of external research, trying to figure out how best we're going to put these together, how these policies and procedures should look. And then, eventually identified Spokane's as the best kind of framework to at least begin working with it, right? So we're not reinventing the wheel. And one of the problems in using Spokane's framework is there are a lot of procedural requirements that need to be scaled down, just to reflect a smaller community, a smaller workload, right? We don't need a weekly grants report to Council because there are a lot of weeks where we just don't have new grants information. We got rid of several policies outright. We don't deal in program revenue, we don't deal in a lot of things like that. So there's no need having a lot of extra policies. So we ended up striking four or five policies off the bat and then kind of started through gutting out policies and kind of rewriting them within this framework because it is laid out fairly well and it's fairly intuitive. So, in addition to that, we developed a kind of universal file naming system. So, the ultimate goal here is that you should be able to type in a basic identifier, right? Looking for the year and what grant it's affiliated with and be able to pull up just about all electronic files being stored on the imp drive at any given time. So we don't have to spend a lot of time hunting around, digging for things, especially if, you know, it's an audit or something like that where time is of the essence, right? We want to move smoothly and quickly. We did consult I S about how best to set up a kind of interdepartmental grants folder. The current system, we're using a lot of, you know, emailing files back and forth, or, you know, getting in contact with police to see if they've got a contract back. The idea here being as we get updated files, things like that, they can be placed in here, from there, the grants manager can take them or other people affiliated with the project and put them up on E-CIVIS. So we're not doing a lot of kind of hunting around and doing a little less ad hoc or on a case-by-case basis. And then finally, we ended up with these 26 policies. You have a few samples in front of you. They've gone through a fairly extensive review process. I took the initial review and then we handed them over to Alisa and she performed an initial review. We went through that two different times, through a kind of a review and kind of checking for consistency and things like that before handing them over to Assistant City Supervisor, looking for some kind of administrative or outside perspective, making sure we're kind of getting caught in our own little bubble. And it was incredibly helpful. We helped clean things quite a bit. We're not quite done with it yet. This is kind of just a general update. I'll be leaving in a couple of days, so got to make sure that this is kind of the first step done. A final review was kind of performed after that. We're getting ready after some input from finance. There are a couple of finance-oriented policies that, one, we want to make sure we're not duplicating existing finance policy. And two, looking for their inputs. They certainly know how they would at least like those policies to be written. Which leaves the next steps, which is entirely in your court.
And Daniel has done a magnificent job. I couldn't, it's just been totally invaluable to me, so I'm, I'm just very pleased.
He had 10 years' worth of records.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a lot of information to go through.
And, you know, when he says files everywhere, like when you first, when I first came to work, I didn't know what was, how things were going to pan out. And so, yeah, I duplicated a lot.
Well, I think we've started saving things differently.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that's what you finally are, you have to have stuff long enough to know how you want to manage it, really.
Right. And so, also, one other thing too, is the, the files that we've uploaded into E-CIVIS are hosted off-site also. So if we ever did have some sort of major catastrophe, we can, and if I wanted to send a password to the auditors, they could, they could log in and look off-site. And so, that, that could be helpful for us. Or I can give authority for certain people to get into the form, into the documents or some people can just go in and look and see. So there's different levels of access that you can give the program to. So, I think that...
Does it have its own software or do you use Google Docs?
No, it's its own software. And you upload.
So, does this also mean that it can be used for managing public information requests and things like that for easy access and pass-throughs?
It would, it would be easy, it would, yes, we could do that.
So the public doesn't necessarily have direct access to looking at any of this?
You have to have a password and a login from the city, so, yeah. And we do still have to maintain, you know, the paper files, which, you know, we're required to do under the, the federal code, so.
And I do think codifying the nomenclature and ditching the redundancy is a huge step forward. Because what happens when you work on one version of the thing, put it back and then somebody else pulls up the other version and now you're talking apples and oranges and hubbub ensues. So, kudos on all of that. It's rather Herculean task.
Yeah. And so, you know, we, we have not, Gary got a briefing and he saw the index and a couple of sample policies, but he's been getting the budget ready and working on several other things. So Jen and I will be presenting the, you know, a draft to him. Her and I, her and I have a few more reviews to do and then we'll be doing that. And then, we'll start moving forward with doing some training on the E-CIVIS software and getting the other departments acclimated to it. And that will also be a time-saving technique for everyone.
You're saying E-CIVIS?
And that's the name of the program that we use.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. And it's a small E, Civis.
Civis, yeah.
And it's used by other, it's, it's a municipal-type program. The other thing that we didn't mention too, and it's not a tool that I've needed to use, but I think it will become more valuable in the future, is that they have a database of hundreds of thousands of grant opportunities. It's, and I think as, I think the political climate will change somewhat, that maybe private funding and other types of nonprofit organizations that have special interests and different things will become more important to us. And we'll need to do a little more searching for some funding for projects. So, we'll be able to use that tool also.
So when you created the documents here for the management, are you keeping all of the departments in the loop about what they've just been committed to by way of managing grants so that they aren't something, oh.
Really, it's, it's not a lot different than what we've been doing, it's formalizing it. And some of them, such as procurement and those things, we're putting on paper a process, learning from our past mistakes over the last few years of what we should have done and, and a step-by-step process. It's, a lot of it is what we've already been doing, it's formalizing it and...
Documenting it, really. Documenting it, really.
Documenting it, yes.
No big surprises for anybody?
No. I think with giving some of the departments access to upload information into ESIVS, it saves a lot of paper, like the police department is sending stuff to me on a daily basis for different grants, and it can be uploaded now.
That's another kind of redundancy.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it would be the providing different staff members throughout the city the option to use ESIVS would be the, really the change in this instance, but it should also provide an efficiency for them. If someone in the police department's doing a report to council on car seats and they want to go in and see what the history of the grants is, they could go in and pull that up. And, I mean, if it's still an issue, call Alisa, of course, but we'll have that, that information will be easier to find and more readily reportable, I think is probably a good way to explain it.
And the, we can run different reports by filtering different information, you know, how much match have we put in over the years for projects, for infrastructure, public works, you know, how many years, we've had car seat grants for so many years, total, what's the total funding been for that over the years? So people have access to look at that information, and I think ESIVS is getting, has become a little bit better in their service area, being able to create reports, or we can ask them to help us build a report too for something specialized. It'll make it a lot easier for Jen and, and the mayor for putting together state-of-the-city data, those types of things, and when, you know, we're called upon to provide information, we'll have access to it more readily.
So does this come with an annual subscription just to get financially picky about it?
And we've, we have subscribed to it for a few years now, we just haven't gotten to a point where we could actually implement and use it.
It's an annual kind of subscription.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I don't have any other questions. I'm looking forward to getting to read more of the information for sure. Walter, did you have any questions or anything?
I'll talk to Alisa afterwards, I've got some markup on this stuff here.
Okay. Welcome to that.
All right. Is there anything else, Daniel?
Oh, that'd be it.
Well, thank you, I'm really glad that you had such a wonderful person and staff to work with, I think it says a lot about our city, and, and it's, it's really cool to see 10 years' worth of work, you know? 10,000 hours, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Good, Daniel, and this is the hardest part of the internship, is they finish their projects and they can go take them into the world, and then, I mean, we always get great new ones, but it's, it's difficult because they've been so great to work with.
Yeah, but so intimately involved in it, yeah.
Thank you.
It was a great culladictory.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no more items on the agenda, so unless there's...
You do.
Oh, sorry, Brownsville Coalition Assessment Grant File Closeout Report.
Yes. This would be our second intern, Chelsea Cuchara, who's been with us since last summer, actually. She had a longer term and has worked on quite a few projects. You've seen her before with citizen survey and some of those types of things, so she's assisted with another grants project as she winds down her, her work with us as well, so...
And we did hand out to you a copy of the final Brownsville Closeout Report, summary report, and then this is also a public outreach piece that we did as part of the, the grant requirements. And so Chelsea has graciously put together a PowerPoint for us today, and so we're gonna go through that together. And she has helped me get through the closeout process and update the website, which she'll show you, and there's been a lot of information. We started this project a very long time ago, so, so I'm actually to put, ready to put this one to rest, and Bill and I are actually working on closing out the cleanup grant for the Sixth and Jackson, so we will have our EPA grants closed soon. So I'll let Chelsea go ahead, and she's gonna run the PowerPoint for me. I'm gonna go over the first slide, and then I'm gonna let her kind of go through the timeline as she built it for us. So we started out with an award 2010, however, we submitted our first application in 2008. And were denied the first year, and then we were awarded the Coalition Assessment Grant in the second year that we applied. We had a total of $475,000. We had $375,750 for hazardous substances, and that's basically everything other than petroleum. And we had funds designated specifically for petroleum, which was 99,250. And so with this money, our direction was to do Phase Ones and Phase Twos, ESAs, and those are environmental site assessments. And there's gonna be a lot of terminology in here, we did provide an acronym page for you, so as you look at your reports, you'll know. But basically, we, our goal in the very beginning, I think, we really wanted to get the railroad corridor cleaned up and ready to redevelop, making sure that we're protecting our neighborhoods' water quality, and we were looking at inconceiving the tax base within the legacy crossing urban renewal district, and being able to have those areas where we could do infill instead of expanding and rebuilding on sites that were potentially contaminated and possibly creating additional for housing and, and green space. So that was our overall focus, and I'll let Chelsea go ahead and go through the next couple of slides.
Yeah, so I put together a project timeline for us. The coalition kind of started in 2009 with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency and the city of Moscow to collaborate together for a project management team that could handle this grant. Originally, it was Jeff Jones, so it's gone through quite a few different hats and...
And originally, it was Travis Carey. I just wanted to note here, and I missed this, we, the county was also a part of the coalition, however, the city and the urban renewal agency were the, were the management team.
Yeah. And so it was awarded in October 1st, with originally to go, 2010, to go through September 30th, 2013, but there was multiple extensions filed, which is one of the things learned from the project, is that it takes a long time for these projects, and so there was an extension until September of 2016. There was two types of consultant in contracting procurement and selection processes, that was the next step, the environmental consultants, which are listed, Terographics and Tetra Tech, and then public outreach was done by Enviro Issues and Red Sky Public Relations. There was site inventory and identification done to determine what sites in town would be eligible for this grant funding. Through that, they had to be Endangered Species Act and National Historic Preservation Act compliance. And then below that is the project activities and deliverables that were completed by, well, the list of those were all actually completed by the environmental consultants, either Tetra Tech or Terographics. And that included master quality assurance project plans, QUAPs, we call those, they have pretty fun acronyms here, and then the environmental assessments, which are the ESAs. Those are the list of all of those, and that's for all projects. We're gonna go over each project individually, that'll give you an idea of what the different projects capacities for each of the reportings were required. There's, along with the consultants doing their work, was the city doing the reporting end for the EPA, which included 24 quarterly update reports, seven annual minority or women business-owned enterprise reports. Would you want to talk about that at all?
If, if the businesses were registered as an MBE or a WBE and qualified, then we would report them separately on a form, and actually Terographics was an organization, and so was Enviro Issues, that had those certifications for the state of Idaho.
And then a final performance report, which is, you guys got a copy of as long as that portfolio, which included a final work plan report, a final summary fact sheet, and a federal financial report. Along with this final reporting piece was the website and public outreach section, which I'm gonna pull that up for you guys, so you can take a look at what we've added on to the website. That's a requirement of the public outreach, so that we have everything that was done on these projects accessible to the public.
Okay.
And then the little brief project conclusions for the different sites. The Dumas Spur and Tribble properties were cleaned up and successfully transitioned. Sixth and Jackson secured an EPA cleanup grant, that's the one that's still underway that Alisa was, had mentioned. And Dumas and Fountain properties have been assessed for redevelopment, and then the Sharp Oil property was sold, entered into a voluntary cleanup program, and construction is underway. A little bit of the financial reporting, it was a total of $475,000. The split between the hazardous waste substance properties and the petroleum, the hazardous waste substance properties had a final balance of that remainder, 3,470, that was unused. And in those financial expenses, the primary tasks that would fall into those different kinds of costs would be project management costs, public involvement or community outreach costs, and then the Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment costs, and then the cleanup planning costs. These are just some of the project benefits, environmental health, public health and safety, social welfare, green spaces and parks, because one of them was turned into a park, leveraged funds, redevelopment activities, and the development, further development of the Southeast Moscow Industrial Park. So this is kind of a slide to tell you about the environmental site assessments, ESAs. There's a Phase One, that's the first step generally, does a review, a site investigation, and that'll determine if there was a Phase Two, so that's kind of the order that they would go in. And Phase Two, they would do some collection of sampling. Common assessment terms that you'll see in these different site reports are contaminants of concerns, recognize environmental conditions, polycyclical aromatic hydrocarbons, I've been learning lots of new words, volatile organic compounds and nitrates. So now we'll talk about the different six properties that were evaluated in the Moscow area. The Dumas Seed property was the, the first one, and these are all kind of formatted the same, so you'll see site map on the left with a little bit of information, approximate size, and then property total expenses on the bottom, and then some historical background as well as the phases that they'd gone through. This was originally a grain, pea, and lentil processing and storaging, storage facility. And it has been, most of the buildings were deconstructed, and it...
Yeah, they salvaged a lot of the lumber that was on-site, it took years, I think three years, yeah. And, got any time, go ahead and take the next one, it's a lot to keep going.
Oh, these are the pictures.
Yeah, Chelsea pulled together some, so there's some of the deconstruction there and, and what the site looks like now, and a picture of Jeff on one of our first public outreach tours that we did, I think back in 2014 or 15. And we did an onsite tour, and we had public transit that took us to each of the sites. So the site is, is sitting vacant now, so, and it's up for sale, and we just have to wait and see what happens at this point. On the Dumas Spur, as you know, the city purchased this property, and it actually was a railroad spur that went off of the, the Dumas Seed site. So the city purchased it, there was a Phase Two done, we had some PAFs and COCs, which we just gave you the acronyms for those, but there was a small amount of contamination, the city did the remediation on the site, and now we have a wonderful park there, all for a little under $30,000.
For sure.
And, yeah, if you look at the before and after, I think it's, it's quite amazing. Actually had an opportunity last Friday, Bill and I, we had two ladies from Spokane come down with Steve Gale from DEQ, and we did a site tour with them, one was from ecology and one from Spokane's Brownfields program, and they were very impressed with the park and the redevelopment activities, so that, that was an opportunity, and they said, "Oh, we can't wait to use some of your formatting for your reports and things." And I said, "Yeah, it's been a lot of work."
Yeah, and this is a nice park in a highly dense neighborhood, so it's a much-needed green space.
Yeah, we're very excited about that. So the Tribble property was one that went pretty fast for us, and it's now the site of Cannon Press. There was a small amount of contamination within the, in the bay, and we did some drilling, and it was determined that it would be okay to leave it for commercial use but not residential. And the owners went in and did quite a bit of improvements, as you can see, and I don't know if you haven't been in this building, but they used a lot of materials from an old barn, and they have the dairy lights on the inside, and their offices are kind of centered around the outside of the building, or the inside walls around the outside edge, and they've used old windows and doors from barns and things, and then the production area is in the center. And there's quite a difference between the, what's the outside of the building looked like in the past, but, and then their, their front counter is old books with the pages out, not the spines, and it's, it's pretty cool if you haven't been in there. But they do a lot of publishing in that facility, and this project was a little under $40,000 to take it through the process, so, yeah. Okay, Sharp Oil. You know, this is, if you go by there, it changes every day right now. So the Domino's building was removed, and right now, all the, you know, we went through the process and brought it to the point where it was ready for it to be cleaned up. And so we used every last dime of petroleum money we had on this, on this project, it's not quite what you see in total, but we had some other expenses in there for travel and training and public outreach. But all of the petroleum money went to the site, and then after the property was purchased, the new property owner rolled it into the voluntary cleanup program with DEQ, and now they're doing cleanup as they are constructing and getting the, the property ready for the new buildings that will be, will be going up. And this is just a really exciting project, I'm so happy about this. So here's some current and past pictures of the, of the site. And we walked that last week, too, we took Spokane on a tour of that, so...
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. You might have some extra blank pages in there, I don't know what happened. The Fountain property, we talked a little bit about this in the other report, too, is the proposed site of the Southeast Moscow Industrial Park, and I think the Moscow Urban Renewal District is looking at forming a new district here right now, or looking if that's an option. We really just had to go through the Phase Two testing. At this point, there hasn't been any restrictions put on it. Would not want to use the groundwater for drinking water, but that wouldn't be something that, that would take place there anyhow. It's, sits in the area of city impact, and so it's the perfect spot for a future industrial light business park. And so basically, as you can see, just to assess a property without a lot of testing, doing the normal Phase Two, we average right between about 38 to 42, 45,000. So that's a lot, a lot of money when you think about it overall. And there we have Jeff again, and the overall map that was put into the industrial park master plan, and I think that's Mr. Lamar, prior council member Lamar.
Yes.
Yes. Sixth and Jackson. I think we're all very familiar with this, Bill reports at this at the urban renewal meetings every other week. There was a great deal of money put in, and that is only funds, the 123,000, 181,78, was just to get us to the point where we prepared for cleanup. So the cleanup property, or the cleanup funds have been separate from this. We took it through, it was enrolled then into the voluntary cleanup program through the URA, and we've had several different Phase Ones and Phase Twos, updated on this project. Everything is listed on the website, which Chelsea's gonna take you to next as part of the link, but I'm so excited about this project, and you'll get a little bit of history when she shows us these other pictures here. So you can remember the, we've had several different buildings on that, but we had the produce, and then the SAC warehouse, that was a little bit controversial when we had that deconstructed, and then what the site looks like now. So I think Chelsea has to pull up another link for us. So this is under city government and projects and programs. And on the left-hand side, you'll see... you'll see status and reports. And on the front page here, we have basically our agreements and our final reports and the consultants. And as you can see, we had four modifications to our original agreement, and those were the project extensions. And then down below, it has the different public outreach, events that we hosted, the video, the Brownfields assessment poster boards, and the final cleanup folio, which we've given you a copy of here, a path to community renewal. And we'll go ahead and go to the second page. So, we have our quarterly reports listed there. Yeah, 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 yeah. And as we go down, then each property has all of its different Phase One, Phase Twos, all of the eligibility, the determinations, the master QUAP and photos. So, everything is on the website now.
Yay, that's great.
Yeah. In addition to this reporting, we have also, EP has what's called an acres system, and we have to update data in there. And we'll continue to do those updates. However, I'm hoping that once we close out on the other project, that our DEQ representative will then maintain that for us. So, and I think then Chelsea kind of wanted to go over her reflection of her work this last semester with us on this project. And I am also very grateful for her because she helped me, she basically redid the website and made sure that all the documents links were working and has proofread hundreds of things for me. And we had a lot of duplication in files. And it's been a lot of work, and I could have never done it without her, never. So...
Yeah, with the help of Zach, Alice, we did the website and the file saving for all the public information to be on there. This has been a good opportunity to really understand redevelopment. Such a long timeline project takes a lot of work and a lot of community involvement. There's been a lot of city people worked on many pieces of this. The impacts that it has to Moscow, they're super fun. I got to go down and take the pictures at the Sharp property and just see that there's construction happening and there's these things planned for future redevelopment in those spaces that could be reused and revitalized, as well as understanding a huge piece of grant compliance and reporting processes for these EPA and DEQ-type funding. Working with the different staff members, Kyle Steele and Alisa's been helping me understand the different acronyms and the scientific part of this project that's very in-depth. And there's a lot of pieces, too, as well as just the scope of a project management of such a, just such a big project. It's been a really great learning opportunity. And I'm really grateful that I can walk away with this. Brownfields is talked about in a lot of places and cities, and a lot of people are doing it. So, I'll be able to know a little bit more than I did when I came, but I'm sure there's still plenty to learn.
Little acronyms.
And I just wanted to close with, you know, this is, this project has really been ongoing since I came to the city. And we had Travis Carey, we had Jeff Jones. When Jeff left, Kyle Steele. And Bill Belknap has been instrumental. Gary and Jen have also helped. And again, it's been a group effort and probably the project I've learned the most on.
It's all about perseverance.
Yeah, yeah.
It really is.
Yeah. And if I could, just another quick note. Thank you also to Chelsea. She's done some amazing work for us, well. Again, it's hard to see them move on to do bigger and better things, but I'm also really proud of everything that they've done while they've been here and what they'll do into the future. So, yeah. Congratulations and thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, just a question about the final date on the report of September 30, 2016. So, does that count projects, the ESA twos and projects that were initiated prior to that? Because clearly, some of it is proceeding on now, especially like the Sharp Oil Site.
So, right, yeah. Sharp right now is operating under the voluntary cleanup program through DEQ, IDQ. We used up all the money we had. And since that time, then the new property owner and DEQ have been working out whatever they're doing. However, the Urban Renewal District, Legacy Crossing, is, has an owner participation agreement with them to contribute some funds toward different things for that project. But as of that date and time, the September 30, 2016, we'd expended all the funds that we had available except for that $3,400 balance and...
Like shaving it pretty close.
Yeah, over that time. We could have spent more on the Sharp property. We ended up just chipping in on the ABCA for the cleanup. It was, the property owner ended up paying for the rest of it. So...
Well, when you said that then EPA will take it over, will the property owner like send pictures and do all that information? Will that go on to this? Or does it go on to then the EPA's?
So, we'll continue to have a website through the Urban Renewal District. Bill's actually putting up a new one. And we'll keep things updated as that progress moves forward.
We can keep watching it, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm sure that Bill will continue to do, you know, progress reports on that. As far as what DEQ is currently doing, the data for that goes into the acres system also. And so, it will be a property record that actually anyone in the public can go in and look at. You can't update or upload or anything, but you can go in and look at it. And I can't remember all the acronym, what the acronym for acre stands for, but it's, it's access to recovery, something, it's, it's a, I don't remember exactly what it stands for. So, but it's, each of our federal agencies has their own website that you work out of. And that just happens to be the name for EPA. And they, and all of the Brownfields worldwide, or whatever EPA works on, because they don't just work on projects in the United States or some in other countries that they're helping with. All those different things are, the data for that is housed in that, in that program.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Well, thanks. And so, you'll be moving on, too, huh?
Very, very soon.
Well, thank you both of you very much. Yeah, it's great to hear such wonderful things from the people we've worked with. That's wonderful. Yeah. All right. So, I guess then, now we're officially done?
Yes.
Without any, we're a solo journey. Thank you.